Okay, Spark County Commission meeting, what is today? June 2nd at 10 o'clock. This is a budget meeting to discuss Sheriff's Budget for fiscal year 23. Workshop format, no decisions will be made.
So, we met a week or two ago, we were through the Sheriff's Budget. And the main things are for this year is the fact that fuel expenses are going up. We did pass the union agreement, which had pretty significant increase in pay, which will have a slight increase this year. Along with any determined cola and so fuel. I actually have a couple of different spreadsheets, bear with me. So for the expenditures, we have about $3.5 million. The main things that we increased were overtime from 100 to 125,000. Fuel, gas and diesel from 80,000 to 120,000. Vehicle maintenance and repair, because it's taking longer to get vehicles in.
Right.
And capital outlay on vehicles, which we never knew. Like according to Clay, there are a couple of vehicles sitting on the train, but we don't pay them until we receive them. So we always have this crossover between fiscal years. So I think we budgeted five vehicles.
The overtime number, is that just a reflection recruitment issues or?
It's just the over, it's basically it is with recruitment issues that we've had, which I feel like we're, I think that will probably will be do better, but what it is also is is not having, we haven't added any positions. So we haven't been fully staffed, but it's even when we're, we're running on a, we're down two right now. But we're just calls for service continue to go up. And with the other things that we haven't done, we didn't add any positions last year. I'm not going to ask for any this year, just because of these other additional things that we're gonna, that are kind of a moving target. Fuel, vehicles is huge for us this year, because we have to get them, but we just don't know. The same vehicles that we were paying, you know, vehicles are going to increase by 20, at least $20,000 for more. Same vehicle. So the big thing with overtime, a lot of it is, it's just that the cost for service continues to go up. And so we're doing more, just the same amount of staff, is ultimately what that overtime. So without, without putting additional positions in, I know that that overtime is going to continue through, let's just go.
Right, and here today, we're at 120,000, so we budgeted 100,000. We used to have the overtime higher, and then we were able to reduce it, but now it's trending back up. There used to be, or there used to be much of it over 100,000. Let's see. So there are some additional costs this year. So we've got the capital out, I might not pull up the detail. So we've had three COPSS grants, two of the COPSS grants are done, so all of that cost does not get reimbursed. And then the third COPSS grant should be done probably, if not this year, next year.
So it'll be a couple of hundred percent loads.
Yes, and then it just moves up into regular payroll. Okay, I did want to just take a quick look at the vehicles. So we originally had three vehicles at 75,000, 70,000, when we had this EIP meeting. And then we added 5,000 in for increasing costs, vehicle costs. And then during the budget meeting, we really came to the fact that they need five and two on the train. So we keep budgeting the full amount, so that we don't have to wait if something comes in. But realistically, we're lucky to get maybe two or three.
We have two that have been on order for over a year. And I mean, we even, we've gone so far as to, we purchased one off a lot, you know, that was a, that was a gently used like a demo, because it just, it was the right color, it was the same kind of vehicle. And, and what we're paying, what we paid for that vehicle is essentially what we were paying for a brand new unit, you know, two years ago, a year and a half ago, when we ordered these others. And, and it's, I don't, I don't necessarily have, there's no blame, it's just, it's unfortunately what it is.
It's just what it is, we've got two graders typically back forth for a year.
Right, and that's just, and that's just what it is. And my, my, my hope is, is when these other two vehicles hit the ground, I don't get a horrendously different number than what I have agreed to already. But we, that, that remains to be seen, we'll see how that works out.
The other piece that I was going to say is, last year we did produce the amount that was to come over from Hill. And all of this is always sort of a juggle at the end to see where the cash position is. I did a slight projection here in this column, and that was through April 10th. But I went ahead and bumped up, like assuming we get 100% of taxes and state entitlement and things like that. So we had budgeted a difference of about 400,000. Expenditures exceeding revenues, and that's recognizing that there are vacancy savings. And you'll see, the sheriff's office payroll is probably going to come in close to 100%. Detention's going to come in lower, because they've had a few vacancies. So even with the pay increases, we're still on budget for what we actually budgeted.
We have a line for the marijuana sales tax for years, because we should have about, I'm guessing about 45-ish, 45,000.
I do not yet, because we haven't talked about, because I haven't seen any money.
Yeah, we won't see any money for a few months, but we, just based on where the, the April total revenue between medical and recreational in April was about 480,000. And if you, I'm just extending that out plus a little for the year, about 6 million for the year. And you look at the 3%, and our Catholic group are half of that, and then half of that to the sheriff's office, that's about 45,000.
So I can put it in, or I can leave it out either way, because I think what we're going to do is probably have a specific fund that the money comes into, and then we'll transfer out there, similar to how we do Hill, so then we can track.
So we'll have 45 to law enforcement, 45 to general funds. And the reason I bring that up is because the Conoco Call me yesterday, doing the story on Galtons pending elections. So I had to refresh my memory.
There's a 20% tax inclusive state, isn't there, Ray?
20% for recreational and 4% for medical. And we did 3% for both.
We'll just put it in this line. We still have a pretty wide spread between revenues and expenditures. That's quite a bit different from last year, last year was 400, this one, this one's like up to 900. So as we look at where the cash is at, and we have our final Hill discussion, we have to look at what that is at. It's always, I can guesstimate what I think Indian cash will be, but I don't, I don't know. Like Mitchell, I really did get a good idea, so we'll do best guess.
As always, yeah.
And I think there were some potential Hill projects that we had budgeted for last year, and I don't think we did.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think we had quite a bit. So I think there's going to be funds available. The big thing would have, allowing the sheriff to go to the floating mill. That his revenues will catch up to his expenditures, because they're going to.
It's just a timing thing.
Yes, so it's just one of those years. I was looking at, this is last year's FY '22. So we've got these projects for the fairgrounds, and I haven't looked at them lately to see what's moved over, or what is moving over to our, or not, but this is just last year. We had each repair, so we had budgeted 2 million for Hill, and just a little bit such, you could put Snapchat on what it looks like. And this is half the, half the stuff hasn't moved yet, but will still move quite a bit, but I don't think we're going to be necessarily over budget for Hill. I've only moved half the transfers from within sheriff, so there's still like half that has to move.
Any what, any cash looks like?
What's that?
Any what, any cash looks right?
Yeah. So it's always the juggle.
Any like one-time items in here that are significant?
For this year, yeah, we had
Did we get the tasers?
We did tasers, we got a, we did have a, but maybe we got the, that's on a, on a TASER 60 program, so we have annual payments on that.
I need to make sure I get paperwork on that, because I'm not sure if I've seen it, but we treat that. It's actually a lot of the glinting, because we've had that over multiple years, so it doesn't.
And then if we do.
We do laptops?
Yeah, we, we just, yeah, we did laptops, and then we also did, we did handhelds in this budget, I remember when those handhelds came.
And then we did have some big vehicle repairs, but they were offset by revenues.
That was a cycle for the, for the handhelds? Is that like on a, what's the replacement software?
Oh gosh, there, there really isn't a replacement cycle for them.
Part of it's technology.
Part of it's, yeah, most of it's technology, most of it's, you know, how they're, how they're working with our servers. Yeah, right. The repeaters and everything that you have. I think our last ones we had for 10 years, 10 to 15 years. So, and, and they, I mean, a lot of people wouldn't say it more than like 800 megahertz, but like our infrastructure must around support that right now. So that would be a major overhaul for the entire communication system, not just like our department.
Right, the reason I ask about it, that with the new communications equipment coming from Willcell, I'm assuming that's all compatible?
It is, yes, so, yeah. We, the units that we bought, there is some forward-looking stuff between different sheriff's offices and state neutralities at the start. So we did make sure that we were in that compatible range with that, so that those, all of these radios that we have now can all be programmed to any of those frequencies. So that would help us, that ever have, we shouldn't have to worry about that for quite some time.
Okay, good.
Same with the tasers, that's a.
Yeah.
By, yeah, that's usually. By your payment program, by your warranty for everything, and typically they'll last, as long as we can extend that warranty, they'll last longer than that.
Yeah, we're on my, my second cycle on that.
Yeah.
The tax revenues are expected to go up, so we're just going to put in a little
Right. So that'll help.
It's aggressive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any clue on what we're going to see for the mill values? I know it's still early, but.
No, all I know is that the inflation rate's like 1.77.
So, yeah, because he's got the three, the three-year goes back to.
Yeah, because it doesn't really matter with the mill, because it's really new. So you get the inflation, and you get new construction, and that's actually what it adds. Taxes, that's it. Even if the mill goes, the value goes way up, the mills go down. And last time I got an estimate for them, it was so far off, it's just not worth spending. No, and really what I did is pretty much just kept the taxes fly from there, and we see what's going on.
Yeah, that's just conservative.
Because I, and part of it for me is just timing, I don't, I mean, I could go in and do the full analysis. And then I change off the figures anyway, so it's a, spending a huge amount of time, a little time to do that. In the different year, it would be more precise. We always like it if revenues go up, right, and we expend it. I'd rather come in towards the end of the bottom budget.
I would love it more if they want to at least save a bit of inflation.
Yeah.
Right, it's going to work.
At least keep up.
So it'll be interesting to see what this year's legislative session is going to look like, because.
Because you're going to pressure both of them, MIA and Mako on that.
And Sydney.
Because I kind of dance around it every year, I never really do anything. And then when inflation was 1%, it didn't matter, but if it stays at 6, it's a big deal.
Right, and how long it's going to stay.
I don't see the legislation care as much about what Mako thinks.
Yeah, I think you're right.
With the communities thing, and so much.
Yeah, I mean.
They just do that kind of thing.
Most of bills put out by Mako, get it in somebody's office, they don't make the floor. So. They will.
A lot of disconnects, unfortunately.
I think for us, coming into this budget cycle for the office, is just trying to just make determinations on the things that you have to have to operate, and that's going to look like price-wise.
Yeah.
And that's the big thing for us, is, is, you know, the vehicle prices is, is a kind of a moving target. And then the, more importantly, that is availability, you know, because we get to a point to where it's like, we have to do, that's why we, if we can find some of these other vehicles that are, that are demos or whatever, that have five or eight or 10,000, or even 20,000 miles on it, that they can really get care of, and we can get those, that would be great for us. But when we can't get those, or like, I mean, I've had, we've had quotes come in from people that are just, it's ludicrous. And I was just like, no, cannot, I mean, what happens unfortunately is they see that it's a government agency that's looking for this vehicle, and then sometimes I swear, it's like, it just adds 10% to it, because you know what I'm saying, it's not like they're trying, they don't, so it's, it is frustrating at that. Not saying that everybody does that, but sometimes it's just like, hey, well, I'm not, I'm not going to pay you 60,000 bucks for you. You know, it's not going to be, there's no way. But again, we have vehicles that are, that have worked for well over a year, and nobody can really even tell you where they are, or where the.
How much the final invoice is.
Or what the final invoice is, that's the other thing too, is like, yeah, we ordered these vehicles a year and three months ago, this is what the invoice price was on, when we ordered those, that's what we agreed to. But when that comes in, and if that's, if that's 15 or 20% more now.
They kind of got you.
Well, they got you stuck, and you know, and that's why Clay was like, well, did we cancel them? I was like, don't cancel them, I was like, because. We're going to be, I said, at least let them get it here, and let's, let's see what, what they're going to say. And that's been the big thing, and then obviously fuel, you know.
Yeah, that makes, impressive, the difference there.
It's huge, because what you figure, it will dump, it will essentially almost dump, because we don't have any choice again. To where we go and how we burn and what we do, we just, you just have to go, and you just, it just is there. So I think that's why we've been sat and looked at this, this cycle is just going to have to be like, as much as I, I need to add some bodies, we just, it's not. I can't, I can't, we can't do it right now, because we just don't know what this upcoming year is going to look like.
Yeah, like, we're, we're going to be faced with all the same decisions, which is just to cover costing.
Right, you're just going to have to be able to maintain what you have and, and get the essentials of. We know that, here's the thing, at the end of the day, we know that we have to have fuel, we have to have vehicles, so that we can operate. So, and those are going to be our, our, our big things. And then I think, like I said, the only other thing that we were really looking for, the jail's got to have a new washer and dryer and a lockbox, you know, it's just, there's just something there that we're, and, and my staff's been pretty good about, you know, it's, it's really a once-in-needs right now, is what it comes down to, you know, and, and the majority of it is, is once-in-needs, and we always want to try to focus on that, but I think we just have to, the fuel thing scares me more than, more than just about anything. And then obviously the vehicles, not being able to get them, because like Erica said, we had some, some higher vehicle costs. But when it's something to the point to where you're like, okay, well, we're not going to spend that much on that vehicle, because we're going to probably rotate that vehicle out. But when you're forced with, we're not so sure we're going to be able to rotate that vehicle out right now. And then what those vehicles have to do, the other thing that it can be nerve-wracking, if I have folks that are having to respond in a patrol vehicle, or at a relatively high rate of speed, and a vehicle that's got 125 or 150,000 miles on it, at some point, it's, it becomes a serious issue. So I think just trying to, trying to move through and navigate that, hopefully maybe some of this will settle. But again, we, we just don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
So we can only, again, we have to try to budget for worst-case scenario, and hope for the best, you know, I guess it's the only way we're having.
Do you have any stats on call volume in the last couple of years, you know, when we made that pitch to legislature in 2017? I bet we're up.
We're up, we could figure, we add, we added, we're up this year, well over 1,000 calls for service to the point of, at this time last year, we've answered 1,000 or 1,310 more calls for service than we did that. And that's, and that is almost, you can look at the, at that progression for us over the last 10 years, and it increases by 1,000 to 1,500 calls for service every year. It just continues that, that's the projection that we have seen moving up. Which is tougher, which in fact does, when you watch overtime start to grow with that, because those same amount of calls have to be answered by the same amount of staff. So that overtime grows with that, because unless you can put a body in there to relieve that person.
Yeah.
Then overtime grows with it. Now, I'm working on some stuff, schedule-wise, that, that will, there will be overtime there, but I'm hoping that if maybe we can flesh something out, and maybe move to a different schedule, that might allow more like a, like a 12-hour rotation schedule, where every, every 12 hours, you have a relief shift that comes in right away, to help try to get those other guys off the street. We're looking at something like that right now, that would, could be, could, could help with the overtime substantial. But again, we have to, what it comes down to is, can you make that schedule work with the amount of soldiers that you have to put in the holds?
Yes.
So we're working on that right now. But again, that was, that's one of those things that, you know, the amount of people dictate what you can do with that schedule, because we have to provide the service.
Yeah.
And so, and I have to take care of my staff too, that's the big thing, the others trying to, because when you run that kind of overtime.
That takes. I know, especially in that kind of a job.
And it just, it just starts to get, it may start to wear pretty, pretty heavy on them, so.
Speaking of accounts, speaking of accounts, it's kind of a side note, I had a question yesterday, some folks who are looking at doing maybe some projects as far as reducing wildlife encounters with traffic with vehicles. Do you have any counts, any like overtime counts for different road segments? As far as like, which of the crashes we've seen, what, what are the, what are the rates, and what are the, which, how many of those are tied to animal crashes?
I could get those numbers for you.
That'd be great, because I wondered, I basically said, let's take the time out, look what the data says.
Yeah, so I can, we can, we can definitely pull those numbers, I mean, just from, from our patrol boats, I can tell you, like, the north end, right here, believe it or not, just south of town, that section is always high, milepost between 7 and 11, 89 North. Always, milepost four to nine in Gardner, milepost four specifically in Gardner.
Okay.
Because they, they cross right there.
It's right out of town. So how are your houses?
Highway stuff, yeah, highway stuff is between, we actually worked on this one at 329, but highway stuff, west of town is, is 329 to the 334 or so. And then east of town, it's, it's kind of a hodge, hodge, it's hard to say. But most of the time, it happens basically between Mission Creek and like the three, that seven-mile stretch between Mission Creek and before you get to Woods Corner, all of those hayfields are all over the side, typically are where they are. But I would say 89 South, just south of town here, I would say between milepost 48 and 50 is non-stop. We haven't had as many because of the construction that's going on.
Right.
And then on 89 North probably has, probably has the most strikes.
I would bet you see this time of year.
Because they're just, they're solid road, but I would say between 7 and 12 is probably the, all to where the hayhoop and stuff, when there's where it was just. That's, it's just non-stop, and it's everything from deer to elk to moose.
Last country now.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could get.
But I can get you, I can.
That'd be great, because I'd like to see it over time, to show if there's an escalation, I'm sure there is, because there's more traffic.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And, and Doc keeps stats on where the pickup carcasses is?
They do, and that's the thing, it's like, it's, it, that's something, but it doesn't cover everything.
Yeah, no, I can, I can definitely, I can pull this, we'll, I'll work on this.
That'd be great, yeah, appreciate it.
And for the Yalzmo City passages, I, I run an app and I document strikes.
Yeah.
And near misses.
As we see.
Ball strikes.
Looks like there's nothing really bad flag-wise or anything unusual, it's just business as usual.
But it's going to be increasing costs.
Yeah, it is, just mostly things that are, we used to sort things by control button, uncontrollable expenses, we got a lot of uncontrollable.
Right, and that's kind of where, when we sat and looked at it, and just seeing the increases and they're dramatic. Not things you can control, so you have to, you just have to, for this cycle for us anyway, I'm just the most the most comfortable with just kind of staying where we are, with the things that we have, that we know we have to have.
Yep.
And I would rather do that, and, and things settle down, and us, you know, continue to come in, unfudge it.
Yeah.
And, and then be able to look at that next, next cycle, and say, okay, this is a good cycle for us to make.
It's good big times, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Just trying to, because it's, I don't want to get into something where you're, where you're like, hey, well, things are a lot of control here, you know what I mean?
I think it's a good strategy.
How's cooperation with the park and cook and bar here?
Seems everything seems good, it's difficult, but I mean, just that relationship is, is, has been solid, and continues to be that way. I haven't heard any of it was.
Park service thing?
Yeah, park service is the same.
Park service.
Or forest service, yeah, sorry. I visit with, with Cam frequently, through the park, and, and we've been good there, you know, just, and they help us out, especially with the, with the time coming up, with the summers and stuff. So they, they help us frequently there at Burke, which is, which is good, and they cook. And then forest service stuff has been good, when we have the, the Craig Clean Research and stuff, we had, yeah, we have members from everywhere at the park, even if they shout, say, hey, we can send resources to the, forest service was in with that, fishing game was in on that deal. Anything on this and that? No, yeah, that helps to facilitate those relationships, and they did our guys' trade with the forest service. So even without W P, we always have a, a strong relationship with, yes, our local, our local relations.
Yeah, I'd be surprised to hear any different.
Yeah, well, and it's, it does happen though, across the state, where there, it can be one or the other, it gets a little torn to us at times.
And sometimes in the past year, too.
Yeah, it has, sure, but the big thing is for us is, is we need those resources.
Yes.
And we have to rely on one another, because none of us have enough to do everything that we need to do.
Can't be everywhere all done.
Right, so having, having good relationships with forest service and F W P and the park, and, and being able to spread out a little bit, because I mean, we have calls all the time, where it's, you know, it's going to be, we'll be on scene, and there'll be a forest service law enforcement officer there maybe, or a fishing game, or highway patrolman, or whomever is in the area. Which it helps a lot, because fostering those relationships, and they listen to the radio.
Yeah.
Instead of calling and saying, hey, can you come, most of the time they get on the radio and say, hey, we're close by, we're, we'll just start going that way as well.
So it's pretty same, much, that, that's.
It's, and it's huge, it really is, it is. So we've, we've actually worked with the forest service as far as helping them get in, integrated with our CAD system, so that when he's out, he could, we can actually see him on our map.
Yeah.
Which has been a big deal for them, because he works alone a lot, and sometimes he's, if he's clear up the, the mill creek drainage at the trailhead or something, then we can't get him on the radio, we can see on GPS where, at least where his computer bits.
Yeah.
So we have to send units to him, we can.
We're doing some of the same stuff in our graders.
Which has been, which has been good, it was kind of one of those things where, it was a little touch and go as to whether or not, you know, it doesn't, you have things to integrate, they're not sure, can you do that, or should you do that?
Yeah.
And I just, we look at it from, it's just a, it's a safety standpoint, so.
Any pushback from anybody?
No, no, not really, I mean, it ultimately comes down to, is it okay with us, and is it okay with you guys, and yeah. For me, like, we just sat down and talked about it. I just don't see the, you know, what is the negative to it, right?
Yeah, it's really not.
So the only thing we said is we put some parameters and say, hey, we don't want that person, if they're on that system for safety, they don't necessarily need to go in and be able to access files or anything like that. But we're using it for a mapping system. They can look at the calls. They can see where things are.
Yeah.
It just, it just makes good sense. I don't see why. And I think I think there is pushback sometimes because there is either old bad blood or something and, and there's just that, we just can't quite get over it and I'm, don't want to let you do that just because I don't have to.
That'll cycle out.
And I think that just, I think for us, it's more of a, we get to that point where we just sit down like, okay, does it make good sense for us to do that? Will it serve the, the community better? Which it absolutely does. It absolutely does. So if he's out, I can't, I mean, there's been multiple times that, that we've had a call that pops up and let's just, I say milk creek because he's up milk creek a lot. But a call pops up on milk creek road and he can see that call.
Yeah.
And he can call in and say, hey, I'm, I'm two miles down the road. Well, that could be the difference in someone's life being saved.
Yeah.
Or maybe not. And, and the fact of the matter is, is to not allow that access to that just because maybe there's a little bad blood somewhere. And then again, if it was something that was abused, then you could just take it away.
Yeah.
But it has not been a problem and we've been doing it for well over a year now.
Good.
And it's, it's been fine. So. Anyway.
Has dispersed candy simmered down? Is that occupying more of your time?
It does a lot.
Cause that's relatively new.
And it's relatively dispersed.
Fire hazard and the behavior.
We're having, we're having, there's, there are several things that are occupying a large amount of our time. You and I have a meeting about one of those.
We do.
Instances with Pine Creek. It's becoming an increasing problem. Like it's going to have, it's a public safety issue.
There might be conflict mitigated.
There's a show out there tonight.
Yeah.
There was, there was one last night, last night that I have. That's some of, some of that overtime is, is.
I saw some of the after effects driving past here a little while ago.
It, it took quite a bit of resources.
A lot of resources.
So it's, it's going to have to be something that we're going to have to, we're, we're going to have to. If we end up with a fire on that road during one of those events, we get a fire truck down the road. It's double part. It's, we have to address it anywhere. But we can, that's a topic for another time.
Yeah, but your demands are not going down?
No, they're not. And, and, and we have to continue to do. Again, for me, it's, it's, it's purely from a public safety standpoint. And I have to, I have to look at that first and foremost. And, and when we see that, we, and we react to those things and we adjust what we do based off of that all the time. There's a lot of things, you know, I mean, we're reasonable improvement for speed limit for how long? We have, we have to have one now because for a public safety issue, we had to address that and make a change. There's things that are happening that are a public safety issue. We do have to make a change, things that we could do two, three, four, ten, fifteen years ago, we just can't do that. And we have that in every aspect of our life and every aspect of business, we make changes. I don't know. When it comes to some things, there's, there's a lot of it, it grates and it's tough and it takes conversation and, and, and some forward thinking to make it work. But ultimately for me, if, if, if there's a risk factor there, a significant one of that, we have to address that.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, that's a problem. And the demand, they're not going down.
Anything else? This law enforcement?
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. I'm happy to do it.
We'll try to find some more money.
That's always the trick, right?
Yeah.
About that conversation that we're going to have about that, I have an idea about that too.
Oh.
Anything else? Yeah.
I haven't seen that they've.
Will be wrote up? What's that?
I think, I haven't either.
I'll, I'll contact Bob today and see.
Yeah, just, I'm good. Like Monday works for me except for the late.
Five thirty.
Yeah, the, the morning stuff is, I'm good with that.
I'll see if we can get it in the morning.
So that works.
All right.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
We'll see you.
Stay safe out there. Thank you.
Public comment? Can I see any public here? Anybody on the phone?
Just me.
Yeah.
Just share that movie adjournment.
Second.
Second, I'll pay for it. I.
Hi.
We're adjourned at ten thirty five.